Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, September 1st, 2022, Meeting of the Planning Board. Our first item of business to review and approve minutes, we do not have any minutes to approve for this month. We have two bills, one bill for, excuse me, $666 for South Quinsigamine Ave., 56 to 66. It's a Graves Engineering receipt. Another one for GZA for Project Falcon Farms, peer review in the amount of $1,195.20 for a total of $1,861.20. Do we have a motion?
A move that we authorize the expenditures is read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next item of business is board member comments, Mr. Rao.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no comments this month.
Mr. Rotalakis.
No comments this month as well.
Mr. Thomas.
No comments, sir.
And I do not have any comments as well. Our first item of business is a continued public hearing for location 193 Hartford Turnpike. Mr. Rotalakis will be recusing himself. I did receive a letter for a request to withdraw this proposal. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments relative to the request for withdrawal?
No comments, Chairman.
No, sir.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request to withdraw the proposed gas station, car wash, convenience store, and bank site plan approval and special permit at 193 Hartford Turnpike.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item of business is a continued public hearing, proposed warehouse and distribution facility site plan approval for location 440 Hartford Turnpike. I have a request for continuance on this as well. Does anyone have a question or comments relative to the request for that proposal?
No comments, Chairman.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we continue the public hearing for the proposed warehouse and distribution facility at 440 Hartford Turnpike to our October 6th.
Yes.
October 6, 2022, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next item of business is a continued public hearing for proposed bank and retail building site plan approval and special permit for location 195 Main Street. The applicants please identify themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, I know you know me, but my name is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue in Shrewsbury here. I'm here with Todd Tomlin, who's the president of Cornerstone Bank, he's to my right, and with John Grenier, who is our engineer of record, and he is to my left. Since the last meeting, we have given you a number of submittals. We've done, we've given you the noise study that we did, we did give you an additional traffic study that was done. We gave you the wall design, and I believe we've dealt with the peer reviewers' comments, and I'm hoping that Mr. Cahill got the response from the peer reviewer that that was all set. We gave you lighting plans and we gave you fence details. I think with those submissions, we don't really have an awful lot to add. I think we went through this last meeting. It's clear that, you know, the ZBA permit is under appeal, we know that. We know that we're doing this at our own risk, and it's because the ZBA permit is a special permit. And we would simply ask you to approve the site plan and the special permit for the Aquifer as we've asked.
Thank you. So anyone on the board that have any questions or comments? Mr. Rao.
No comments. My only concern like with the ZBA under appeal, how would this go?
As far as this board is concerned, it's really not a concern of ours. If the ZBA decision gets challenged and overturned, then they would have to come back in front of us to meet the ZBA decision.
That's correct, yes.
Right, that's my understanding.
Yes, and I think Mr. Cahill will verify that.
Correct, yeah. So if there's, if there's some sort of corollary change or some other agreement made around the ZBA decision, then it would be, and it impacts this plan, they'd come back in for that site plan modification. No building permits are getting pulled either way regardless of the decision tonight because building permits won't get issued until all decisions are uploaded and approved. So if there's one under appeal, doesn't matter how many others are getting approved, there's no building permit issued until that other appeal's resolved.
Thanks.
Yep.
Mr. Jerry.
My only question was as it pertained to the letter back from Graves with the landscaping. They cited the mature trees along the street and were commenting on whether it was your intention to keep them or not, or whether they would all be removed. Just curious if there was a plan.
Did you get an answer for that?
We are, they are fairly substantial canopies on those, so just for visibility, we are proposing to remove most, not all of them, but we do have a landscape plan that was submitted that shows plantings around the perimeter in the back to the residential house, that is, to our east. There is some substantial evergreens along that, and that's getting beefed up with additional plantings plus a fence.
Yep, trim those trees up.
But they do have new plantings being posted along the front as well, just so not to provide so much screening.
So you would expect, then, the majority of the trees on Main Street would be removed?
Correct.
Quite a few, I think. I think whatever remains would be trimmed up in order to clear the view of the bank. They're not interested in making it devoid of nice mature trees.
Right.
So if they can take advantage of that, as I've spoken with my client, and if they can take advantage of that and trim them up so that you have a clear view of the bank, then it's a win-win.
Right. Okay, thank you, that's all.
I had a similar question about that. If there's anything that can be done, I'm sure the landscape is going to have some input on that.
Yeah, mature trees do add to a property without question, yes. They add to the property without question.
Okay. Mr. Thomas.
The fence on the wall, that was my concern. We would, there was some confusion about which fence was going to be on the wall, was it going to be chain link, or was it going to be vinyl or wood?
Chain link, right?
Chain link.
It's chain link.
Is that what it said on the paper?
I believe so.
Okay. There was just having, there was some confusion about which one it was in one of the letters.
There's a, there's a fence, more of a six and a half.
Foot solid fence.
Solid fence on the right-hand side.
Right, right.
But then for safety, there's a retaining wall on the left-hand side that's next to the brick building.
Yep.
Next to the RE/MAX.
For RE/MAX, so that'll have more versus a safety fence as opposed to.
So that'll be a chain link fence on that side? Okay. That was, I just was confused about what was going to be there.
It's hard for us to imagine someone stumbling out of the RE/MAX and coming over that well, but.
You never know.
Never know, and so it's a chain link fence in order to avoid that.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah, and it looks like the Graves comments updated. There was a question about the proximity of the retaining wall to the property line. That has since been resolved.
Yes, yes. And what we did is because of the style of, so that wall is designed because the base of the wall is fairly wide or thick. So we pulled the face of the wall towards the parking lot, towards the curb line a little bit, just so we weren't so close to the property at the base, the property line at the base of the wall.
Thank you. That pretty much takes care of my questions. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard?
Excuse me, could you please go to the, could you please go to the microphone? Good evening, I'm Howard Potash. I represent Vincenzo Orizzi. I don't have anything to add other than our opposition because of traffic that I stated last meeting. And we are all planning to meet September 14th and the parties to see if we can come to a resolution.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Not seeing any more. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing for the proposed bank and retail buildings site plan approval and special permit at 195 Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. In front of you, you see we have a draft decision. It's a pretty standard decision. I do not believe there were any waivers requested. The only one.
We did have a couple of conditions. No, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the waiver part, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead, please. You're picking up right where I was gonna go.
Yeah, no waivers were requested. We did have a few conditions. So number one, just non-standard conditions where the no certificate of occupancy, excuse me, shall be issued for the non-banking retail building until after the westerlymost entry/exit is widened to a minimum of 20 feet, and after the road moratorium for Main Street has been lifted, which I believe we're only about two years away from that, I think. It's been three.
It's been three, yep.
So the time the building gets built, occupied, it's going to be approximately that time.
Mm-hmm.
That was at the behest of the Police and Fire Department for access. Number two was just, there was concern, Mr. Chairman, you asked me, I believe, last time to draft a condition around trash removals, that's condition number two on your draft decisions, trash removal from dumpsters. We threw in trash compactor just in case, I don't anticipate one, but we had it in a different decision, so I just copied and pasted it over. Operations shall only occur between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM Sunday and Saturday, which is standard for other sites in town. Signs shall be affixed to all dumpsters and compactors stating the allowed days and times for removal and operation. The other one, we heard concerns from the neighbors, and I believe, I just kind of anticipated this one, you can strike it or change it if you want. Number three was the other one, site lighting shall be dimmed and turned off to the maximum extent practicable, and turned off to the maximum extent practicable after business hours.
Yep.
Just to address some lighting issues that I know came up, so.
Thank you.
The rest of it is kind of our standard language around Asian lumber beetles, water supplies, and so on and so forth.
Yep. Very good. Thank you for making those additions on the, on the trash removal for me. Any questions or comments relative to the decision?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the decision of the proposed bank and retail buildings at 195 Main Street with the three additional conditions as read by Mr. Cahill regarding the occupancy permit, the trash removal, and the lighting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item of business is a continued public hearing for 1 Greenbrier Road, over-55 housing development site plan approval and special permit. Location is 1 Greenbrier Road and our Gulf Street. Mr. Grenier is getting his materials.
John Grenier, JM Grenier Associates. I expect my client to be here shortly. He's on his way, told me he was going to be here, probably about now. So where we stand is while we submitted updated plans that do need to get reviewed by Graves Engineering, those plans reflect what we had talked about at the last hearing where we removed the wetland crossing and we reduced the unit count to 60 units total. And so everything, all the development is primarily on the south side of the project with a loop driveway that services the 60, the 60 total units, which is a mix of duplexes. I believe it's 27 duplexes and six single-style units. The one item that, and I submitted, I submitted a letter today, and we did an analysis because there was some concern, we understand, from your board regarding densities on-site. So what we did was we did an analysis of this site compared to other over-55s that have been permitted and built within town, and that includes Adams Farm, it includes Orchard Meadow, it includes the recently-built-out Lake Street project, and the recently-built-out Wyman Farm project. So based on that analysis, this, this site is about 38 acres. Other sites have varying acreage, both Adams Farm and Orchard Meadow, those are in the 40-acre range, they have about the same acreage as this type of project. The, and of all the developments, all the over-55 developments, this site on a unit-per-acre basis is the least dense of all the other over-55s in town. Adams Farm, I believe, was like 1.8 times more dense on a, on a unit-per-acre basis. And actually, I think it was, actually, I think it was, I think it was Orchard Meadow that was, was the highest. I think they were at 2.0, I don't have the letter in front of me.
2.85.
2.85, and we're at like 1.8.
5.8.
So they're like 1.8 times as dense. And I believe on that site, they got a lot of their density because they had a mix of fourplexes, they have threeplexes, they had some duplexes, those, they had a lot of their, they had larger buildings, they didn't have the separation between, for instance, we're doing duplexes and singles, so you need separation between the duplexes, you do a fourplex, you're putting everything together. We believe that we could be more, obviously, we could be more dense if we clustered buildings, you know, made them fourplexes, made them threeplexes, and clustered them together. We think that having a mix of duplexes and singles is a more attractive project. You can spread out landscaping between buildings, you don't have the massing. So we believe that this is, although we could probably get a little denser, we think that this adds more aesthetically, it's a better, it's a better layout. So just to put things in perspective, we wanted to compare this to other projects, just so we know where do we stand in the mix. Is this a really dense project? The other thing that we looked at too was if we, and it wasn't in the letter, but this afternoon, we took a look at, okay, how much upland is there versus wetland? And if it was just upland, what would the density be? So of the 38 acres that we have, we have 28 and a half acres that's upland. So if you based it off of the 28 acre, 28 and a half acres of upland for the 60 units, that put us at, I think, 2.1 units per acre. So we're still less dense than a lot of these other projects. And with the modification that we had on the northeasterly portion of the site, where we had that crossing, that was about five acres of upland that, now that'll be open space. And that was adjacent to some of our closest to Butters, so I'm sure they're happy about that. The Conservation Commission was happy about that because it gave some, in terms of habitat, obviously, the wetlands were protecting, but that also gave some upland habitat as well, as well as wetland habitat for, for different species that may be, you know, traversing the site. I know there may be some vernal pools up north of our site, so there are some, you know, whether it's frogs or other things that they like to be in the vernal pools, they like to be wet, but also they like the upland. So it gave, in terms of conservation, they were happy with that because it gave us some, some diverse habitat, both wet and upland, that wouldn't be touched and, and open space. So I just wanted to point that out, I know that was a concern of yours. Obviously, we meet all of our other zoning setbacks, all our separation between buildings, everything is being sprinkled, so, because we're closer than 50 feet between buildings, but that's within the zoning, that's required. That's, that's a zoning requirement, not a, not a fire department requirement. You wouldn't have to go under fire department regulations until, if you did a threeplex, that's when it would trigger it. So that's a zoning item in terms of sprinkling, so again, we're meeting all of the zoning, we're meeting, we're less than our allowable density, we meet all of our separations, we meet all of our zoning setbacks, and comparatively speaking, we're, we're the least dense of all the other projects in town. So I just wanted to point that out, just so, you know, apples for apples, where do we stand? But the one thing that, obviously, as we've discussed many times, we need Conservation to get their approval, though we have, the plans updated, the one thing that we're trying to wrap up now is that flood study. We've put together pretty much all of the information, we just have some field work to do to get cross-sections of some of the drainage ways that, where everything, all the tributary drainage areas that come into the site. So we have probably about a week of field work to do, to do cross-sections on some of the drainage channels and whatnot that come into the site. So once we have that, then we can plug all that in and let the software do its, do its thing. And we'll be getting that into Conservation, that's also going to go to FEMA to get looked at, because this is not going to be, this, we'll be changing the map. We're not going to just be amending it for one parcel, we're going to be altering the flood map for this area. So we have to do a complete, a complete job for that, so. But we're hopefully on the tail end of doing those calculations. It is, it is pretty time-intensive and it takes a while, but we're on the tail end of that. Hopefully, we'll have that to Conservation prior to their next meeting, because they're the third Tuesday of September.
Second Tuesday of the month, isn't it?
Third.
Conservation?
Conservation's third.
I'm thinking of a different.
So their third Tuesday of the month, so hopefully we have that probably into them. But again, all, all of the site planning, all of the, you know, design, drainage, all of that is, is complete, we just have to finish off that, that piece of the puzzle, so. And again, we'll be looking to get a review from Graves based on this, this last round of revision, so we'll be looking to address those in the meantime as well. So this is more kind of informative, letting you know where we stand, trying to get some more feedback if there's other items that we need to, you know, look at or address. We're here to talk.
The only thing I wanted to bring up, John, is because I know you didn't go in front of Conservation, I just briefly looked at these plans.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's kind of senseless for us to spend time on something that we don't know what's going to happen, right?
Understood.
One of the other comments that I brought up on the density thing was also the driveways being across from one another. I looked at this very quickly, it looked like many of them were addressed, but do you know if there's any that still have driveways that are completely straight across opposing one another?
We do have, there are some that are pseudo, like you might have, they might be staggered one driveway to another, but not necessarily directly across. But in all honesty, we don't see that as a safety issue. I looked at some of the other projects, whether it was Orchard Meadow, Adams Farm, they have driveways that are, I, I don't see how that is a, is a safety concern, is that what you're...
That was my initial concern, yes.
I don't, personally, I don't, I've never had anybody comment on that, I've never seen it as being a safety concern. To the extent that we can do that, we're fine doing that. And if I can swap around some, whether it's a single with a duplex or that we get a little bit more staggering, and not something directly across from each other, we're fine to do that. But that really, design-wise, that's not, not something that we're typically really worried about in terms of somebody backing into somebody. I mean, you have a 20, 22-foot, 20-foot driving aisle, so, you know, not to say that people don't have issues backing up, but if you can't back up there, you got, you got problems.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. Rao.
Yeah, I mean, last time we expressed concern, the board as a whole expressed the concern about the density of the units. I know prior to you changing the number of units, the density on, on this section was less, and then you added almost like 10 more units to this, and that's what.
Six. It was six.
Six? Yeah, okay, six.
And we made the road, we made the road a little wide, the loop a little bit wider.
Yeah.
Spread things out so that we can accommodate that.
I know, I mean, you, you lost some units at the other side, therefore you added here. We do understand that, but the comparison here, you compared all other, other similar type of developments, but the, but the upland comparison is something that I want to kind of take time to look at it, you know, I mean.
Okay.
That part you, you said that comes to about 2.1 units per acre, so if that is the case, I mean, I do want to kind of look into that little bit, little bit in greater detail if that is in fact true.
Sure.
You may have a case there, but that, that obviously is one of the main concern for the board. It, it is a concern because you, for, for that upland area, you added more units and that's, that's a concern, as you rightfully said, you know. That's, that's.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry.
Yeah, I think like Mr. Rao stated, my concern here is still the density, and I appreciate this analysis you put together, John, but, you know, if it's based off of the 28 acres of upland, and then you take out the five where you're not developing, where there's not going to be a crossing.
Well, there is other upland beyond that, but that was just the, the chunk that we were, we were going to develop, but there is other upland on, on-site beyond that.
Right, and I guess what I'm looking at is the area that's actually being developed. If you were to look at this in comparison to the other 55 and overs for just the area on-site that's being developed, I'd hazard a guess, if I even took that five out and you were at 23 acres, you're at about 2.6. So if there's other land there, upland, that's not being developed, then you're all of a sudden at the top of your chart. So I still have some concern about the density here, but I think until this goes through Conservation, it's.
Sure.
Not that relevant, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Rotalakis.
Again, I'm just going to, I'm going to reserve most of my comments until we have some input from Conservation, and I, you know, I appreciate what the applicant has done here. I also appreciate the applicant, I'm hearing my comments relative to a double-barreled road, and I'm hopeful that you can, that road can be built based on Conservation, what you get through with Conservation. But I think that Orchard Meadow and Adams Farm both have a secondary means of access, so I'm not sure that they should be in the analysis. I guess my, assuming this is still a dead end, even though I appreciate your, again, looking at the double-barreled road, I guess that I would look at, one, one thing that I would like to, I guess, one variable I think that should be added is the density and the length of the, of the dead-end road, even, even with a double-barrelled. But again, I guess I'll wait for Conservation.
Okay. Mr. Thomas.
I think each project needs to be looked at at its own merit, and I, and I appreciate the, the numbers here, but, you know, traffic is different for different projects and sloping and things of that nature, so I still feel that this is much too dense, just number one for the traffic. I know 55s don't generate a lot of traffic, but it's in a different neighborhood than a lot of the other projects are. So to me, that's my biggest concern, so if I saw a significant unit count, I might be more happy with the way it's laid out, but the way it lays now, I, I feel there's just too many units in that one area. But again, we have to see what Conservation says, so I'm just going to leave it at that for now.
And my, my comments at the last meeting was, I asked, maybe you could look at, it's a much smaller number, I went as low as 35, I thought that was a little of reach on my point, but I did go as high as 45.
You made the paper.
So I, I, I agree with some of the other board members in terms of, it's just the aesthetics of it, and to Mr. Thomas's point, you know, every project is on its own merit at the same.
I understand, I understand.
Right, so, so just take that as, you know, some additional important cause, we're going to have to wait until Conservation is complete, so.
Understood.
Okay. With that, is there any questions or comments from the audience?
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the Greenbrier site plan and special permit until.
October 6.
October 6, Thursday, October 6.
October 6th, Thursday, October 6th, at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, our next item of business is a new public hearing. It's for a proposed collision center and retail building site plan approval. MAG RE Holdings, 800 Boston Turnpike LLC, location 420 Boston Turnpike. Mr. Thomas, please read the public notice.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue. Here the application of MAG RE Holdings, 800 Boston Turnpike, 777 Washington Street, Newton, Mass., 02460, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7 F3, for site plan approval by the Planning Board to allow for the construction of a new retail building and for the partial demolition and redevelopment of existing structure for an automobile repair and body shop associated parking and infrastructure, as shown on plans entitled "Site Development Plans for 420 Boston Worcester Turnpike" and 10 sheets dated March 14th, 2022, and revised on August 1st, 2022, prepared by Kelly Engineering Group Incorporated, 0 Campanelli Drive, Rain Tree, Mass., 02184, stamped by David Noel Kelly PE and Stephen M. Hofstall, PLS. The subject property is located on the south side of Boston Turnpike, West Leeve Industrial Drive and East Leeve Oak Street. It consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 33, Plot 09079000. A copy of the plans may be seen in Department of Economic and Planning Development or on the Planning Board website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The applicant, please introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, I know you know me, but for the record, my name is Richard Ricker, I'm, I'm the attorney for this particular applicant, and my offices are at 11 Maple Avenue. With me tonight is Dave McWell from Kelly Engineering Group, who is the engineer of record for this project. We also have some folks from Floor and Decor, who are the, I would suggest to you, Class A occupant that we hope to see located at this site, at the building, at the building at the front of the site as you look at it from Boston Turnpike. By way of introduction, I think we all know 420 Boston Turnpike, it's been a old manufacturing facility for a number of years. It has had its better days, to say the least. I, I know that the buildings there have had much better days now. One of the buildings actually was condemned, and the McGovern Auto Group purchased this site in September of '21, and it is hopeful that you understand and feel the same way I do, which is that this proposal that we're gonna show you is tremendous in terms of a revitalization of an otherwise rundown and decrepit site. This, this proposal is for, you know, I've had three successive fire chiefs in this town tell me that these were the most dangerous buildings they knew of, I mean, you can't get more than that. I mean, in any event, the property is now back on the tax rolls on, on a, a regular basis, it's, it's current on the tax rolls. We have been in front of the Selectmen for a garage license and, and for the licenses, for also to park inventoried vehicles at the site for McGovern's Auto Group dealerships. We will be, this, this proposal involves demolishing most of the building structures there, however, leaving the shell of the rear building, the furthest building from Boston Turnpike, which is being circled right now on, on the plan, on the, on the board. The, that structure will become and be refurbished as the collision center. The collision center will be used as a collision and a refit center for McGovern Auto and, and the auto dealerships that McGovern has. By refit, we mean those vehicles for law enforcement, for fire, for that type of group of users. He takes vehicles, I should say, they take vehicles, and they fit them up for the purposes that they're intended. They, they take a Explorer, Interceptor, and they ended up to be a police cruiser, basically. That's an example. The, um, the collision center alone, we, I would suggest to you, is gonna employ 60-plus employees in the $50,000 to $160,000 wage bracket. So we feel that it's kind of bringing in skilled auto technicians and others for support of the proposed operations. And as I said, we've been in front of the Selectmen already. We were granted the license in front of the Selectmen, although we're now gonna go back, because at that time, we didn't have the, the yellow structure that you see at the, at the front, we didn't have that on the plan. That was basically a vacant spot, as you can see on the plan before you now. And we stated at that time, we made it very clear at the ZBA and the, and the Selectmen that we, we intended to find a user for that location. And lo and behold, shortly after we got the license, and shortly after we were in front of the ZBA, Floor and Decor comes along, these folks here are from Floor and Decor. So after negotiations with Floor and Decor, the decision was made to come back. We spoke with planning, we spoke with the Selectmen. So we will be going back to the Selectmen with the revised plan. We'll be going back to the ZBA with the revised plan as well. And we will be dealing, and, and we have filed with conservation, so that, the first planned hearing night is planned with conservation, because there are, as you know, a number of wetlands around the rear of the site. So that is the process, that's before us. We expect to have, to be able to answer the questions. We're happy now that we can show the whole site as being developed, rather than just a, a part of it. And we, we think that this gives everybody the comfort in knowing that this is the full plan. So again, we're happy that we have a Class A tenant coming here, although I would suggest to you that the McGovern Collision Center is Class A as well, it's a state-of-the-art building. And the elevations are outstanding, I think, I think that what you are gonna see going forward, we know we're coming back to you after, after tonight, and we wanted to give you an overview tonight. But I think it's a, it's a redevelopment of a property in this town that is sorely needed, and I think that we can all be proud of. With that, if David could go through the plan a little bit?
We'll just, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, any concerned parties in the audience? My name is David McWell with Kelly Engineering Group. I am representing Kelly Engineering, who prepared the site plans before the Planning Board this evening, and have been helping Mr. McGovern out on some, some projects here in Shrewsbury. And we're delighted to be here, along with the team, to have our first Planning Board meeting on this project. So just start with some, some basics. The existing property, as shown in this aerial photo, is a large building, 218,000 square feet or so. Uses vary from warehouse, we, we heard there's also flea market that used to happen in there, and also a smaller 16,000 square foot building out on the front. The property is about 15.3 acres. And for the redevelopment process, we don't need to use any of the curb cuts. There's a full right-hand turn curb cut here to access the property from Route 9 when you're traveling eastbound. And to get to the westbound, you could go, you know, obviously go back out and go east to get westbound. We get out here to Oak Street, and we're at the traffic light that will allow you to access the west part. So the property is fully located in the commercial business zoning district, and it abuts some of, one, multi-family residential and single-family residential on the left side over here. The redevelopment project is, we'll start with the one that, when Matt McGovern came to us, he wanted to build a collision center, and we started working on this, I think, last winter. How he would go and re-demise this building, get his collision center in there, and also obtain a license from the Board of Selectmen to do some car storage. When this was in its first initial stage of permitting, it was pretty easy because we didn't have a use, we're gonna create a lot of green space. Everything, we have a retail pad, but we didn't know what was gonna happen. Happens that the retail pad user came along before we were done our permitting for the, we hadn't, I don't think we had got to the Planning Board yet.
Hadn't come here.
We hadn't come here, we had filed, but we had to withdraw to refile. So the plan that we, that we had was going to have, we'll just go right into some, certain things with the pad. The original project was gonna take down a little bit more than half of the building and reuse about half of the building, and then have parking for the use, and then also additional parking as licensed by the Board of Selectmen to store new vehicles from the dealerships.
Inventory stack parking.
Inventory, inventory parking. Associated with that was a full slew of improvements, including landscaping, drainage, significant reduction in impervious, impervious area. When we refiled the project, it's a very similar project, except the retail pad becomes the Floor and Decor store, which is a retail store, however, it's not, not your, I, I don't wanna say it's your typical retail store, because I think it's more geared toward...
Contractors.
Contractors, or I don't wanna say wholesale, because anybody can go in, but we think that that's the majority of the customers, is contractors buying floor, picking up and getting floor materials for their jobs. It's not like, not necessarily like a Home Depot, because they only have flooring. So maybe more like a couch or a furniture store, or something like that.
I'm told that the ratio of commercial to retail, the ordinary retail is 60/40.
So working with the, with the town, during the last process, we were, had, had determined and come up with a, a parking scheme that we've kind of simplified here. The, the plan had about 500 parking stalls when we were here, 560.
560, yeah.
And 333 were in excess of the 128 for zoning, and that was, was on that plan. So the, the new plan, since we're building a building and we need more parking, we've only, we're losing about 100 parking stalls, but getting all the uses on there. So this plan here represents, the dark blue represents the zoning required as negotiated with the building inspector, what is required by zoning for the collision center, and that is 127 or 128 parking stalls.
Not really negotiated, it's, it's per the zoning.
Right. Per the zoning, at one, one per thousand square feet, and also counting the office and some storage. The cyan, or the light blue color, is the retail required for 187 parking stalls. The purple color represents the, the remaining parking stalls, that's about 245 parking stalls that will be used for either the fit-out cars, which will be new cars...
Inventory parking.
Inventory parking, and possibly even cars that are under repair would be parked there. So really, the only difference on, on these two plans is we're, we're now developing a small parking lot on this side. Access remains the same, the curb cut on Route 9 remains identical, access to Oak Street remains identical, and we have a nice circulation that doesn't need to go on any other, any other roads within the town at all. So pretty straightforward on that. As we had mentioned, this is a full redevelopment project that also has to comply with some of the redevelopment standards. There's a lot of pavement out there and a lot of building, a lot of impervious area, and there's pretty much no drainage out there now. So part of coming up to snuff on this project and the previous one, this is just a brief picture, we know this is governed by conservation, we need the stormwater management permit, we are filing, we act, we have actually filed with conservation. So just an overview of some of the improvements that come to the town, that help the town manage with its MS4 permit and stormwater and things like that. There is a big drainage easement that comes right through the site for, that goes to the town. So in order to comply with the new standards and improve the site, we're installing four subsurface recharge basins that will comply with the stormwater management bylaw, provide dedicated storage for recharge to help with foster destruction and those things. Also installing, I think it's nine or 10 new enhanced water quality devices that will make the project compliant with DEP standards for TSS removal. I know that that's not a big part of, of the, of this Planning Board hearing, but those are the things that we decided that we would annotate in addition to the plans that we provided with the documents. I have all of the plans and all of the documents that were submitted on the laptop, if everybody wants to see them. I can pull up the elevations, floor plans, landscaping plan, lighting plan. I noticed that the lighting plan that we submitted was just the plan. Actually found the cut sheets as well, if anybody wants to see those, they're all dark sky compliant. Didn't jump out at me when I looked at the lighting plan, but they're all proposed at 25 feet tall, the lights, all are dark sky compliant LED facing down at the parking lot. So I have, I have those as well, so we, we have a fairly complete package, as, as Richard had said, and we're ready to move to the next level. We do know, fully aware that we do need conservation approval, and we're going back to the zoning board and also back to the Board of Selectmen to update those agreements. So we understand that the Planning Board probably is not in a position to close the public hearing or, or issue a vote, but we were, were interested to see what Planning Board members or members of the public have to say about this project in the light of the Planning Board and the fact, I think this is our first public forum with the proposed retail floor and decor.
With this plan, yes.
So those are the slides that we have prepared for the project that summarize a lot of the things. And as I said, as, as needed, I can pull up any of the other documents.
Very good, thank you. Members of the board, any questions or comment, Mr. Rao?
At this stage, no questions, I'm sure as a project developer we'll have more questions. But the, the road that connects to Oak Street, I'm sure you are going to expand on that, right, like right now you said...
We're not gonna widen it. And, and we said that at the Zoning Board of Appeals, the last time we were there, we have no intention of widening that road at all, it's plenty wide. It's gonna be repaved that, however.
Okay.
Everything gets repaved and, and drainage gets put in, and, and everything gets redone.
It seems very small, again, I mean, it's all grown trees.
I, I think, I think you see some overgrown trees there, but, but the pavement width there is, is sufficient, I'm told.
Very good. Is that it?
Yeah.
Mr. Jerry?
Yeah, I think the only thing that jumps off me was similar to what Mr. Rao said. I'd be interested to see what the expected increase in traffic on Oak Street would be by this use as opposed to what was there before, but I'm sure we'll delve into that.
Well, as you know, if I could address that, as you know, there was great concern about the flea market when it was there. And, and that was the big, you know, pusher of, oh geez, we gotta close that driveway, you know? So, but if we redeveloped this site with the same office and commercial and manufacturing ratios that are there now, the traffic would be a whole lot more than what we're dealing with here, a whole lot more. So we, we feel that this is a tremendous improvement on that.
So I have...
Very good, Mr. Rotalakis.
Richard, if you could just refresh my recollection, why did you have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Because the entrance on Route 9 is within 500 feet of the Greek church up on Industrial Drive. And so we, we asked for a variance on that, because technically, the collision center, although it's at the rear of the lot, the collision center entranceway cannot be within 500 feet of a church, all right? We also are there for special permits for the, the use. The garage use requires a special permit in the commercial business zone. And the other reason we're there is because of, I, I went before the Selectmen, we got a permit for inventory parking from McGovern on this site. And in our bylaw, there is a provision that states that repair shops can only park vehicles on their site there for repair. Obviously, that doesn't work on a site like this, we have, we have a 15-acre site, and we wanted to utilize the site for parking inventory vehicles.
So you needed what, use variance?
Well, I guess you'd call it a use variance, because it's a, it's a variance from a footnote to a footnote under, under the use table. So it's, it's the, the little niche that goes with, with the special permit, frankly. Special permit for the garage and special, special permit for the repair shop. Special permit for the garage and special, special permit for the repair shop requires that there be no vehicles other than the repair vehicles on, on the site. So, that's one of the footnotes. There's two footnotes. The, the other footnote, um.
It escapes me right now. I was trying to think of it too.
Yeah, offhand, I can, I can tell you.
That's okay. That's okay, but you got the relief you needed.
We did. Uh, however, we're going back, uh, for it again, um, because of the change of the plan. So, um, we needed, uh, oh, the second special permit was to alter a, um, prior non-conforming structure. Okay? Under section four B of our bylaw, the, um, any, any structure that is non-conforming. In this case, the non-conformity is the setback from Industrial Drive, uh, which you see to the right of the, of the project. And that, those buildings are within, uh, the setback, uh, limits of commercial zone.
So, other than the issue about the storage of inventory on site, which, for which you got a use variance, uh, these are all allowed uses under our zoning bylaw?
Absolutely. And, and the.
No special permit that you're looking for from us? Just citing an approval?
Right. Yep. And, and the use variance that you talk about is, is, as I say, it's a footnote, and it's, and it's based on the license, the extension of the licenses from the BMW and the Audi dealerships.
But you got it?
Yeah.
So, it's final?
Yeah.
Okay. And just my recollection from the, the, uh, flea market, those hearings that wouldn't end.
Yeah, that's true.
My thought was, my, my recollection was that the, the Oak Street access was within the residential zone, but that's not correct.
No, that's not.
Oak Street access was, so I think that the assertions at that hearing that the Oak Street acts, that this traversed a zone line was incorrect at, at the time of, of the flea market.
Actually, what the concern of the neighbors was, was that, uh, flea market, uh, people, um, uh, would be exiting to the left and traveling through their neighborhoods.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Looking for yard sales.
And, you know, they were concerned, because the flea market, as you know, was a Saturday and Sunday only deal. And that filled up that parking lot. I mean, I mean, as, as bad as that parking lot is, boy, they filled it up. And, uh, they didn't want that crowd basically taking a left out of Oak Street and, and getting lost in their neighborhoods. So, uh, that, that's what their concern was.
Okay. I'm all set for that.
Mr. Thomas?
I don't think it's in, it's in the commercial zone, right?
No, we, we, I actually annotated this plan earlier today, because I realized we didn't show all of the zoning districts. But here in the blue line is actually the zoning districts. So, we've got commercial business up here. Residential one is this house here, and then resident, this is multifamily residential directly across the street. The zone lines in the middle of the street between commercial business and multifamily residential.
Middle of Oak Street.
And then we're up in commercial business.
So, the entirety of the access road to Oak Street?
The frontage of the entire properties within the commercial business zone.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
The easement's not gonna be, impact you in any way, right? It's not gonna, the, the easement that goes through the property?
Nope. Well, it, it needs to be, get rebuilt. That's one thing that is for the benefit of the town.
But I can see it's basically just going through the parking lot.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. That's a drainage system that is definitely in need of repairs.
Okay, um, uh, that was really all I had for now. Obviously, things are gonna come up as it goes, but for now, that's all. I see. Got you.
And again, cursory, first time seeing the plan, I got a couple of items. First of all, for car carriers, does transporting the vehicles going on site?
They'll all be doing it on site.
Okay.
The lanes are sufficient.
Just so that you know, we've run into issues with the Subaru dealership on the other side of Route nine with car carriers on odd hours. We're not expecting that to happen. I mean, it's likely we're probably gonna put a condition on that, so that's during regular business hours. Is that something that you're going to be aware of, or?
I'll, I'll raise the flag, and if it's an issue, I'll let you know.
Okay. Um, and on top of that, with the car carriers, um, my expectation or understanding would be that they'd be coming and utilizing Route nine, not necessarily Oak Street. I'm not talking about maybe turning on Oak Street to come into the site, but they're not gonna traverse Oak Street from the back end of the neighborhood side. That would be, that be a fair statement?
I think that's an acceptable condition, because looking at the maps, I don't think there's anywhere, you, I don't think you could go left out Oak Street and get any destination other than a residence. I don't think you could get anywhere faster.
I'm just thinking, like, you're not expecting that the cars would come through, or?
From Route twenty?
From Route twenty, down Oak Street.
No.
Into the site. So, I, I, a concern of mine.
But bear in mind that this is not a car dealership, okay? I mean, these are overflow inventory vehicles.
Yep.
That are stored there, and, and it, it's not a everyday occurrence of, of bringing cars in and out of this type of a lot.
Yep.
Uh, that's not our experience, and that's not what's gonna happen.
Okay.
And as far as the collision center goes, um, yeah, you, you will have, um, probably tow trucks that would bring vehicles there.
We expect that.
In some cases, off hours, because they, they take them off the road off hours.
The thing is, is concern is the car carriers coming at three in the morning.
I'm not necessarily concerned about a tow truck pulling a single vehicle.
Because that's, because what you're doing, the way they deliver these inventory vehicles is they drive them from, from the dealership to
Okay.
To these lots. So, that's not a problem.
Very good. The other note I'll, I'll say is the, um, the plans themselves are extremely busy. It's really hard for, and I've been doing this for over ten years now. If we could have a plan that's got some of the layers shut off, so that we can actually see the parking, so we can get a better sense of the flow of what's happening on the site, I would, I would have really appreciated that.
We had that discussion today.
Okay. And like, for instance, the snow removal. I can't tell you how much time I spent trying to find out where it is. So, if we could have something that identifies the parking, basic flow of how the site is, and plus the snow, snow storage, um, areas, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
I'm looking at. I would point out, if I could, about deliveries. Floor and decor, of course, um, is a retail store.
Mm-hmm.
And they would have nighttime deliveries.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Not on a car carrier?
Not on a car carrier.
And more likely than not accessing through Route nine, right?
I just wanna make that clear.
I mean, Route twenty.
From a retail's perspective, those stores do get deliveries.
And there's only one other item that I, I happened to look at when I was looking through the plan so closely is, uh, you got, in the collision center area, there's a retail parts and showroom. I, I, I was kinda thrown off by that. Could you explain the retail?
That's for the fit-up center. Uh, that's when, uh, for instance, the police department personnel will come in, and they'll say, I want that kinda light, or I want that kinda light for my fit-up for my.
So, this is not anticipated for general retail?
No, no.
Accessing the materials?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. This is for the fit-up center. We, we discussed that at, at the ZBA, you may recall that, Bernie. Um, we, we discussed it at the ZBA. Mr. McGovern was there. He explained at that time that, uh, no, that's, that's for our, um, customer base, which is, which is towns, municipalities. Uh, they send their people in to pick out the type of equipment they want on the fit-up vehicles.
Very good. Thank you. This was confusing to me, that's all.
And I would also point out, um, while we're at it, that there's almost eighty parking spaces within the building itself.
Yep. I, I'm looking forward to something happening on that site. It's, uh, it's been in disrepair for quite some time now, so.
This is gonna be a state-of-the-art collision center, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question. Can we go back to the parking with all the, um, color coding?
No.
Okay. Richard, I'm still gonna kick out of the, um, what'd you call them? The, uh, the flea market people? Still trying not to start chuckling, not stopping, so.
Those people.
The flea market people. Well, I go to flea markets sometimes.
Listen, we all do. We all do, but I, I remember, that's the comments we, we hear. We went through so many hearings for that. Do you recall that? I mean.
I've just never heard that term before, so flea market.
I think that's what they call it.
I'm gonna use it. So, my question here was, for the floor and decor parking, just so I'm clear, those two lines, the vertical and horizontal purple for storage, is that, so like, if I drove into floor and decor off of Route nine, essentially, there's gonna be a, a line of the stored vehicles, like, kind of almost making a wall on either side of me? Like, I wanna be?
Well, you.
It could very well be empty.
It, it could very well be empty, but it also could, also could be, um, inventory, could be, could be, um, uh, employee parking, um, things like that. That's, that's what they have.
Is there gonna, gonna be any way to demarcate that?
I was gonna just ask that.
The problem was trying to police that. That's the problem with that.
Fair enough, but still.
Yeah.
Some maybe hash marks. I, I'm just throwing something out there, just to differentiate. I don't know many, too many parking lots I, unless it's an actual auto dealership where I'm pulling into and surrounded by inventory. Just something to think about and the point to consider.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the planning department has not written the letter yet, but we intend to write it next week and have it, uh, ready to go.
Very good. Thank you.
Bernie's parting shot.
We're getting there. We're getting there.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, we, we, we talked with McGovern a little bit today about some of those things, and it depend, you know, where he has, like, might have the employees, if it's very busy and they've got a lot of fit-up cars and a lot of collision cars that wanna be close to the building, because they're coming in and out, it, it could be that he might wanna park employees over here and make them walk.
And, and so we were working on that this afternoon.
So, you know.
We're trying to.
Flexibility's very important.
I'm sure that floor and decor has, has probably had some concern about making sure that their parking spaces are not gonna be consumed, right? I mean, that's.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely. It's, it's a requirement of their, of their lease that they have a, a set number of parking.
Very good.
All right, um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the proposed collision in retail building for Fort Twenty Boston Turnpike Site Plan Approval until Thursday, October sixth at seven P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That ends our hearings for this evening. Um, we do have another item agenda here that's amending the inclusionary housing application form to include Town Center District. It's a new public meeting.
Yes. So, there's no legal notice for this. Uh, we ran it by Town Council to make sure we could make this amendment as a public meeting, not a public hearing. Simply put, um, the new Town Center District, uh, it was created two years ago, last, uh, August, and there was an inclusionary element, a requirement that, um, over a certain number of units, um, would trigger a percentage to be affordable units. I think we've been dealing with this a lot lately in other projects. Uh, so in this case, the Town Center District's twelve point five percent. We went back, we forgot to put it in some of the language of the bylaw, came back at special town meeting, added it in. Uh, we forgot one more item, which is, of course, the application itself, that we require applicants to submit for inclusionary, when inclusionary housing is required, and the, it is before you, I sent you all, uh, copies of it. And you can see, literally, it's in the table of all the other different zoning districts in town. We just insert Town Center zoning district as well. Ba-da-boom, it's done. That's it. There's not much else to it. It's just that when someone goes to do a development in the Town Center District, they can now check a box and put it next to that district. It wasn't possible before.
Very good. And this, um, I believe town meeting is allowing us to make minor modifications like this without having to go before town meeting for approval.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's not town meeting. I, we checked with Town Council, and it's not a substantive change at all. It's simply the application form needs to be updated. It's a format change on an application form, so it's not even within the rules and regs. So, it's, it's a procedural document. Um, so it was checked out.
Okay.
But we do wanna vote, uh, just to codify that it's been put in.
Is there, is there any questions or comments relative to this amendment request?
No questions, no comments, Mr. Jerry.
I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads saying no. All right. So, I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we amend, uh, the inclusionary housing application form to include the Town Center District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I do have a new business item here for a bond release. Oh, there it is. I was gonna say, I did not have the bond release.
For, uh, two seventy-four Walnut Street.
Okay, so this is a bond release for two seventy-four Walnut Street, Putnam Shrewsbury LLC, for the amount of five thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety cents. And I, I'm guessing that everything is squared with this and?
Correct. We've received the as-built. Uh, Louise and I have conducted, um, site visit with engineering, and it, uh, passed muster.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments relative to the bond release?
No comment, Jim.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we entertain, I mean, I move that we approve the release of the bond for two seventy-four Walnut Street, as explained by the chair.
So, there is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And while you're all signing that, the other bit of new business news is that tonight is my last night staffing the planning board. My last day in Shrewsbury will be next Friday, September ninth, so it's been six years to the day. I looked at the calendar that I started staffing this planning board. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, all of you, and the people of Shrewsbury, and town meeting members, and town staff. It's been great. It's been a great experience. So, thank you very much. Best with all of your endeavors and your families and everything else, and thank you.
Well, and I, and I will speak for myself, and I'm sure the board will probably have a few comments for themselves. I can't, um, say thank you enough for all the support you've done, um, since coming on, um, these last six years. Your, your knowledge base and understanding of all the ins and outs of what we have to do here is exceptional, and, um, I can only hope that we can get someone even closely to your qualification. So, I, I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
Thanks, Steve.
If anybody else wants to have any comments, partner?
Well, I'd like to say thank you, Bernie. Um, you are the face of the planning board. We meet here just once a month. Um, I mean, you, you make us look good for, 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 uh, for all the things that we do, you know? You are the meat and bones of all the work that, uh, we do. Too bad all the audience are not here, you know? You, uh, you, you answer all their questions, day in and day out. I think that they'll miss you, we'll miss you. Um, you, you have been great. I've been here only for a few years, but, uh, you have been great, uh, for Town of Shrewsbury. I think the, the town misses. We miss, and, um, all the people who used to attend public hearing will miss you.
Thank you, partner.
Thank you.
I would echo all those comments and just say, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You're extremely professional. You have great attention to detail, and I've always admired the calm demeanor that you have when dealing with challenging people.
Yeah. Know what you're talking about.
Grateful, uh, for your service to the town and wish you and your family the best in your next chapter.
Thanks.
Bernie, thank you for your service to the town. You know, you keep us organized and on the straight and narrow. You undertook a significant amount of, uh, you took the laboring oar on a significant change to our zoning bylaw, which requires, uh, a great deal of patience, attention to detail, uh, and thoroughness, which, uh, I, as part-time, uh, town employees, we could never do on our own. And I, I think that zoning bylaw now is in a position where there is a lot less internal conflict, and it makes a lot more sense. So, again, thank you for your service, and I wish you well in, in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Steve.
Bernie, I, we've been here about the same amount of time.
Yep.
I've been only about four or more months longer than you, and, uh, I've learned a lot from you. You've always guided me the right way, and, uh, you seem to always have the answer, and I like that in somebody when I don't always have the answer. So, I appreciate everything you've done for, uh, me and the board and the town, and, uh, I wish you luck in everything you do from here on in.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
Oh, do you know?
Bernie, I'm relatively new, so I don't know all your bad faults, but.
There are none.
We can list them off for you.
My question is now what? I mean, where do we go from here for the, as, as the town goes?
Um, so, the, uh, advertisement for this position has already gone out. Um, there'll be a vetting period, and, um, in the meantime, the board can rely on Louise and Emily and the rest of the planning staff, um, to help you along the way. Kristen Lass also used to be the town planner, so she knows where it's at and where all the skeletons are hidden, so to speak, in the planning world in town. Um, but more than that, she knows, she knows in and out her planning, um, her planning stuff. So, she's, she's there to help as well, and hopefully, within a month or so, there'll be a new person, uh, on board and, um, ready to go. I think, I think the Town of Shrewsbury's in good hands, and, um, it's great leadership, and, um, yeah. I've been working with all of them.
As far as the town ordinance is concerned, do you have to have a planner for the next meeting? I mean, uh?
No.
No?
No. There's nothing like that. Um, in fact, when I served on the planning board in Maynard, my first two and a half years, we just had an administrator, planning administrator, help the board, uh, before the town hired a planner. So, there's no, as far as I know, no state requirement or even town requirement to have one, but there will be someone here. Louise will certainly be here at the next meeting, and I'm guessing Kristen Lass, but I don't wanna speak for her, 'cause she has her own schedule, so there'll be someone here staffing, and of course, in the intervening weeks between now and the next meeting, there'll be someone as well. So, um, and I'm gonna help Louise make sure by the end of next week, uh, decisions are drafted and comment letters are done, and we're ready to go, and kind of a clean slate for the next kind of round of applicants that come in, so.
Good luck.
Yes.
Thank you. It's been wonderful, and again, thank you to all of you. Yeah, likewise. You've been a great board to work with, and, um, so thank you.
No, thank you.
With that.